There's an overview of Mr. Amin Lalji, who is the president of Larko. It read very carefully, I read it very carefully, and the more I read it, the more angry I become. In it, Mr. Lalji described as being the people behind the Chateau Laurier. I agree with that. We are told that they are very wealthy, they live in Vancouver, and they are from Uganda. While I think we all came from somewhere, unless you are from the indigenous community, we all came from somewhere. And the article is written with 800 words, but not enough room in it to say the owner is also a Canadian citizen. That would require a lot of time and effort to look that up. I find it very disappointing how this family has been portrayed. I'm sure they have a lot of imperfection, but that is not relevant to this debate. Mr. Lalji, he fled Uganda under the dictatorship of Idi Amin, just like most of us or a lot of us who left their home country for a reason or other. And I know maybe it's not so important today to members of council to say Mr. Lalji is a Canadian citizen. And for those of my colleague who challenge, say, oh, you must receive funding from that company. Well, maybe you should read the municipal act, because I don't think you can receive donations from outside the province or from outside the city in a municipal election. Imagine if we talk about the people in our community the way we talk about the owner of Larko. Imagine if we say the same thing about Mr. Mulharts or the Sinkhalts or about the Verid family or the Saikli or any other family who came in and built this city and this country. Mr. Mayor, I just have to say, have due process. We don't subject people to arbitrary actions or motions where one day a right is granted to you and the next day is taken away. So I want to make it perfectly clear that I cannot support this heavy-handed motion, a motion that tries to reverse a previous unanimous vote of council. This motion was not an empty gesture. It granted someone's right. And the motion from the Ward Council aimed to take those rights away. I'm very proud to be a Canadian, and I'm proud we live in this democratic where the right cannot be taken away so easily. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Does anyone wish to speak before councillor Flurry wraps up? Anyone else? Councillor Flurry?
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking the city, which has worked for the past three years on this file. I think there have been high points, there have been low points as well. I'd also like to thank the members of the public who have spoken from their heart and spoken in emotional terms about the importance of the Chateau Laurier for them. Now, despite the fact that the Chateau Laurier is in my community, it belongs to all people living in Ottawa, it belongs to all Canadians, in fact.
I heard from some who are not supporting the motion, going back to the motion that was passed in June of 2018. You can look at it from all sorts of ways. You might or might not understand the intent. What I can share with you is the intent, although it's not in writing, was that the applicant was going to get a new architect. That was never achieved. And there's nothing that we could have done that could have written that into the motion itself. Were we wrong, were we right? I think Rick Shirelli provided the timing context of that motion. And if that's the argument, that we take the mistake that that motion wasn't well-written, I'll take it. The motion wasn't well-written. But since then, there's a new application. That process was followed. I don't believe that the intent of the motion was respected. And I think it's important that members of council, to Jeff Leeper's point, before we passed that motion, staff were comfortable with the application. We passed that motion with key indications. And then they're coming back to us saying, you've achieved the goals and the intent of that motion. Politically, we can say no. And where I'm puzzled about this is that no one has told me they like it. No one around this table has told me they like it. So if you don't like it, the only action that you can take is to vote yes. For those who argue with me on process, you had two weeks to write an amendment, two weeks to bring forward a different motion that would have created a different environment. No one could find a different way to go about bringing forward a stop to this project or renewal of that project. I'm open to friendly amendments, but I didn't hear any. Because at this point, is the only legal step we can take to stop this and to reset it.
I think it's important also to consider the legal aspects of the case. There is legal risk, there always will be. All decisions we make at this council have a risk. Well, we can start making decisions if you don't want legal risk. We can do that. But we have a responsibility to the public. The public's been very clear on this. And over the past few years, fast to two days, in fact, two weeks, there have been thousands of comments from ordinary people saying that in favour it was proposed.
Saying this is in Larko's hands, you're right. But it's not in Larko's hands if we're not consistent in establishing what council's direction is. If today, we pass the motion, then we're clear about what council's intent. You did not achieve what our objectives were as part of the June 2018 motion. We send that clear message, it offers hope. And that's why we're all involved in our community. That's why we all want to be elected, is because we believe that politics is the agent for hope. It's the agent for not just change. You're in the game, you're in the arena. You want to make change in your community. So I believe that a vote, a yes vote today means this. First off, that we've listened to the community, which is first and foremost the responsibility why we're here. It's very unanimous in terms of the community feedback. And that we send a clear direction so that the applicant knows where we stand. And yes, litigation might be one of those components. But I've seen when leadership comes to the table, I've seen it. Remember the Ottawa Hospital? Location of that site? That was going nowhere, it was making the news everywhere. The leaders in this community came together, did a 100-day truce, and look where we're at today. The Ottawa Hospital is well underway, will be built, will be a pride of our city. So I really put hope in our roles and responsibility. I think that if we vote unanimously yes, it will be perceived as an impasse and opens up the opportunity for a 100-day truce, a conversation with Larko, involve our provincial and federal partners. And yes, maybe in the end we'll lose in court, but that will be Larko's decision. Let's be clear about what council's wishes are.
Thank you. As you're aware, the City of Ottawa's Planning Committee approved a site plan control application for the Chateau Laurier at its meeting of June 13, 2019. The Built Heritage Subcommittee conditionally approved the heritage permit on June 18, 2018. And on June 28, 2018, council voted unanimously to support the motion drafted by then-councillor Toby Neusbaum, which he drafted in collaboration with the vice-chair of the Built Heritage Subcommittee, Mary Podolsky, and the Ward Councillor. Now, let me read you a memo from the former chair to staff. Quote, "Attached is a draft motion that I've developed with the vice-chair after speaking to members of the Built Heritage Subcommittee. I've tried to thread the needle by being sufficiently prescriptive without handcuffing you or the applicant to one single particular architectural outcome," end quote. At the same time, the motion was supported enthusiastically by the Ward Councillor. And in fact, in September 2016, when the original design was released, the Ward Councillor sent in a written statement provided to the media on Larko news release paper, quote, "It is an exciting project that introduces captivating architectural design to this important site for our capital city while highlighting its important heritage value and location near the Parliament buildings, Major's Hill Park, as well as the Byward Market," end quote. So on the very first day that this issue came to the public's light, the local councillor wholeheartedly endorsed it. Now, it's regretful that council and the city for this matter have been dragged into this mess over the last several months.
A great shame that the Ward Council approved the first proposal from Larko in 2016.
Armin Lalji, owner of Larko Investments, to express my thoughts on the matter before us and to ask if they would be willing to come back with a sixth version of the design. After a very thorough discussion, it became clear to me that they remain steadfast in their position and are not prepared to invest more time and money on a sixth design. Larko believes that the current application meets all of the conditions set by council and the heritage regulations. They believe that the current design is the outcome of a rigorous process that included input from city staff, the urban design review panel, the heritage working group, the NCC, the Built Heritage Subcommittee, Planning Committee, and extensive public consultation. I recognize that most decisions to locate a modern design next to an historic design are controversial. But I remind you that the Chateau Laurier, at the end of the day, is not our property. It's not the federal government's property. It is private property. And as such, responsibility for the design of this addition of the Chateau Laurier rests with the architect and landscape architect as determined by Larko, the property owner.
As you know, the Chateau Laurier is privately held, and this addition is the responsibility of the owner.
council decision to withdraw the heritage permit would be upwards of $200,000 and would require us to hire outside planning expertise. I don't think we should spend tax dollars on a fight our legal advisers are indicating we won't win. I asked our legal team to research if a municipality had ever revoked a heritage permit, and they could not find a single instance of this ever happening in Canada. And let remind us all that our heritage staff, who have a very excellent reputation, recommended the issuance of this heritage permit. If they had felt it was not up to their high standards, heritage staff would not have issued a permit over a year ago. The city cannot require a building to be built in a particular style or by a particular architect. That's the choice of the applicant. We had one councillor go on TV and demand that this privately-held firm hire a new architect. And there was never any consideration, as was stated here today, and I confirmed that with Mr. Lalji, that they were going to change architects. In this instance, the owner has opted to pursue a contemporary design. There is a lot of false information circulating right now. A resident spoke to me just a few days ago and asked me if Larko will be putting up a wall all around the Chateau Laurier. And I've heard that the historic views of the Chateau Laurier from Wellington Street will be covered. I can assure residents watching today that the dominant view of the Chateau Laurier seen from Wellington Street, the front entrance, will be preserved for residents and visitors. No changes. Prom nights and wedding receptions will continue to be held at the Chateau Laurier for years to come. The Ward Councillor claims there is no back to this building. Well, that's completely nonsensical. Let's not forget that the back of the Chateau Laurier was an antiquated concrete parking garage. It was the place where the garbage and recycling containers were kept and where two parking booths and snow-removal equipment is stored.
But the back of the Chateau Laurier has been in parking lot for years.
The park. An enclosed glass gallery facing Major's Hill Park allows east-west movement with pedestrian access to Mackenzie Avenue. Now, Ottawa City Council unanimously delegated authority to both the Planning Committee and to our highly capable staff to move this issue forward at the urging of the Ward Councillor. At the end of the day, it's not about my opinion on the design. The decision before us today is not about an aesthetic agreement or disagreement. This group included a number of national experts and was co-chaired by the NCC. It also included the author of the NCC heritage guidelines documents that were specifically completed to guide the design of any addition to the Chateau Laurier. This group was instrumental in recommending the building massing and height of the current proposal. We know that the City of Ottawa heritage experts have confirmed that the conditions imposed by council have been met.
Our staff has confirmed that the conditions set by municipal council have been satisfied.
The city, Larko also hired a heritage architect, Michael McClelland, one of Canada's leading heritage experts. Mr. McClelland and our heritage staff agree that the new design meets the three conditions set by council. You are being asked to sustain a decision of council within the rules of the Planning, Heritage, and Municipal Act and our own official plan. As council members, we must act within the rules that govern our decision-making. This is a fundamental rule of fairness and transparency. We can't change the rules because we do not agree with the design choice. The motion before you, as been stated by a number of members of council, will not stop this development. We have read in the media that Larko will defend their position if the city revokes the heritage permit. And we have heard our staff's opinion that Larko's case is strong. I support the work that city staff have done on this file. And I'd like to thank the members of the Planning Committee and the Built Heritage Subcommittee for their careful consideration of this application. Residents do have the right to advocate for what they believe. But I would like to remind members of council that Friends of Lansdowne legal challenge ended up costing city taxpayers well over $2 million in legal fees and delayed the revitalization by two years. To staff, I'd like to take a moment to recognize your efforts. The motion being considered today has unintended negative implications for staff. I, for one, do not support the removal of delegated authority to the very staff who have done to the letter what we directed them to do as a council. After years of work by staff, to have their recommendations publicly challenged through this motion is not in the best interest of the municipality. I know this has been an extremely difficult decision, and I want to recognize your professionalism throughout this debate. The Chateau Laurier has had a robust legislative review that has taken well over three years, with extensive public consultation and hundreds of hours of staff consideration.
So dossier at a... This file has been debated for hundreds of hours.
...that has formed that wants to stop the owners of the Chateau Laurier from proceeding. Some have suggested the government should expropriate this property, a move that would require upwards of $300 million of taxpayers' money. $300 million to stop a private property owner from designing a privately-funded addition to their own building. And the notion and suggestion that we want to give a grant to this multi-billionaire is ludicrous. I'm sure taxpayers in Alberta would like to see their tax dollars used to buy a hotel in Ottawa on private property. I acknowledge that this debate has been difficult for many residents and has been difficult and troubling for members of council. I agree with you, many of you, that we have a duty to represent the public. And I believe that is what we've done over the last few years to push this design as far as we could. We also, as councillor Egley, a lawyer, pointed out, have to make informed decisions based on the Planning Act, the Heritage Act, and the city's official plan. We're a regulatory body, at the end of the day, with duties to fulfill based on the law, not on who can send the most emails or publish the most op-eds. And we also have a duty to be respectful of taxpayers' money and to not throw scarcity resources at legal fights that we cannot win. Some have claimed this decision is a matter of leadership, and I couldn't agree more. I believe leadership is about making informed decisions based on the rules that govern us collectively in a civil society, even when that decision is difficult or unpopular. I'm asking you to show leadership today and to reject this motion and sustain the recommendation of staff and the decision of council. And I strongly encourage you to reject the motion as it will not accomplish what it says it's going to do. So we have yays and nays on the motion before us.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
Hard no.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Elshantiiri?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Conseil Cloutier?
No.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Suds?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor McKennie?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Mihen?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett?
No.
Councillor Blay? Councillor Tierney?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, councillor Deans?
I would like to move, seconded by councillor Shirelli, that council accept notice of the following motion of reconsideration pursuant to subsection 68.2 of the procedure bylaw. Be it resolved that the Flurry-Leaper motion of July 10, 2019, with respect to the alteration of the Chateau Laurier 1 Rita Street, be reconsidered.
Point of order, councillor Harder, please.
It's been a long time since we had a reconsideration, but I thought the reconsideration had to be moved by somebody who voted in favour of it.
No, no, ask Rick O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor, if you could help us with that. My understanding is we need eight members of council to support it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Any member who was voting on the motion can vote for or move a motion of reconsideration. And it would in fact require one-third of those present in voting. So if the vote goes ahead, it would require at least eight votes.
Okay, so do you want to hand in your motion, councillor Deans?
Yeah, and I'll just call a yays and nays.
Sorry? Yeah, I just want to get a copy of the motion. There you go, councillor Deans. Good, thank you. Okay, so with a motion for reconsideration, there's no debate on this, yays and nays.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
No.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Elshantiiri?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Conseil Cloutier?
No.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Flurry?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Suds?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor McKennie?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Mihen?
Yes.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor Blay? Councillor Tierney?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Ten yays, thirteen nays.
Thank you. I have a motion seconded by councillor Egley, whereas a notice of motion was given at the council meeting of June 26 and respective conditions of the heritage permit approved by council on June 27, whereas the motion was considered by council on July 10, 2019, and whereas the motion was defeated, and whereas notice of reconsideration and respective decision of council shall... Sorry. Decision by council on the motion has been given and accepted in accordance with subsection 68.4 of the Rules of Procedure, whereas subsection 68.11 of the Rules of Procedure state that if a notice of motion for reconsideration is accepted by the council and subject to section 61, the consideration of the motion to reconsider shall be the first item of business at the next meeting of the council, unless the council decides to deal with the motion at some time earlier. Whereas the mayor has stated that in accordance with section 14 of the Rules of Procedures, he's prepared to call a special meeting of council on July 11 at 2:00 p.m. for consideration of the motion to reconsider. Therefore, be it resolved that the motion to reconsider the decision of council respective of the Flurry-Leaper motion on the Chateau Laurier be dealt with at the special meeting of council be held on July 11, 2019 at 2:00 p.m. Yays and nays? Yays and nays on meeting tomorrow?
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Daruz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Elshantiiri?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Menard?
I had questions on the motion.
Councillor Menard?
Did we not have any time for that?
Aye or nay? All right, go on.
No, then.
Councillor Flurry?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Suds?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
No.
Councillor Dudas? Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor McKennie?
No.
Councillor Egley?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Mihen?
No.
Councillor Moffett?
Yes.
Councillor Blay? Councillor Tierney? Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Fifteen yays, eight nays?
Councillor Elshantiiri has a motion seconded by councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Elshantiiri, please, will you read your motion?
Got a mic, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to put it in a little bit... This is about an election contribution rebate program extension due to the state of emergency. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Kavanaugh. Whereas the municipal election act 1996, MEA, enable a municipality to pass bylaw that provides for payment of rebate to a person who contribute to candidate for office on a municipal council and may establish conditions under which such a rebate is paid. And whereas the City of Ottawa first established a contribution rebate program in 2002, and the most recent update to the program were approved by council on July 11, 2018, bylaw 2018-33, in advance of 2018 municipal elections. And whereas under the contribution rebate program, individuals who have contributed to participate in candidate are eligible for a rebate for a rebate in accordance with the rules set out by bylaw 2018-33, and whereas the bylaw 2018-33 set out a deadline, May 28, 2019, at 2:00 p.m. for contributor to submit their application for a rebate on contribution to initial campaign during the 2018 municipal election, and whereas the City of Ottawa declared a state of emergency on April 25, 2019, in response to a flooding along the Ottawa River, which was only lifted on June 12, 2019, and whereas many residents have been personally affected by the flood, having to focus on the safety of their families, their personal property, and their neighbors, and whereas the following declaration of all city department were fully engaged in the emergency response, and we are and are reviewing how services could be adjusted in the light of the state of emergency to ease the burden on affected residents. And whereas the office of the city clerk and solicitor is aware that some contributors to candidate of 2018 municipal election may have been affected by the flood, and whereas bylaw 2018-33 does not specifically contemplate a scenario where an extension might be required if perceptual deadline occurred during a state of emergency, and whereas the city council has the authority under the MEA to amend this contribution rebate bylaw in a matter that is fair and compassionate, and with providing an extension for contributors to file their application for the rebate will have no financial implication to the cost of the program. Therefore, be it resolved that the deadline for contributors to submit a rebate application for initial campaign for the 2018 municipal election be aligned with the deadline for submitting a rebate application for supplemental campaign for 2018 municipal election, i.e. November 2019 at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, so that's moved by Councillor El Shantiri, seconded by Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Shirelli has a question or comment.
My question is, I think, to the city solicitor, and the question relates to the timing of when ultimately people, if this passes, ultimately when will they receive their rebate checks?
Yeah, Mr.
And secondly, because I have recently learned that the initial rebates won't even begin till 2020, and I've already had, I understand I've had one contributor already pass away, and I'm wondering how long this could go on and will that extend that deadline or that remittance of the checks as well.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this motion, whether it's passed or not, would not affect the issuance of the checks, and the member is correct, it would probably be in early 2020 that we would do it in any event, so it would have no effect on the current process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so anyone else to speak on this? On the motion, carried. Motion's requiring suspension of the Rules of Procedures, we have one by Councillor Harder, seconded by Councillor Tierney, on part lot control exemption. There's a timing sensitivity with respect to August 28 on suspension, carried. Councillor Harder, would you like to introduce your motion, please?
It often occurs that subdivisions are registered in blocks and for title to be conveyed to the first homeowners that move in while the rest of it's still being built, and the city has to exempt bylaw such blocks from part lot control, and this routinely happens by bylaws listed at the end of each meeting of council. Such bylaws must contain the plan of subdivision number, which is only known when the subdivision is registered. So for all the period from 2001 to date, there has not been a case where a subdivision is registered after the July meeting of council, and there is a need to have a part lot control exemption bylaw before the August meeting of council. However, staff anticipate this year that one such case likely in Councillor Gower's area will occur, therefore staff are recommending that an ad hoc committee of four members of council, being the mayor, the chair of planning committee, or the vice chair, the ward councillor, be created to approve the enactment of such bylaws, and that would be like another person which Councillor, Deputy Mayor DeRus has agreed to do. If a meeting is required, it's not likely that it would last more than five minutes, so it will be, it's just part of a procedure, but it's a necessary procedure so people can move into their homes.
Okay, Councillor Leeper, questions and comments?
I think we're getting, at the end of Chair Harder's comments, what does this actually do? Apologies, this is not a process I'm familiar with.
Yeah, I know, it's like, Mr. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, this enables part lot control to be enacted in the six weeks between council meeting of today and the council meeting of August 28. We're actually aware of two plans of subdivision now that this is going to be needed, otherwise people can't, for blocks of homes, they're broken up by part lot control, and otherwise people wouldn't be able to close in their homes until August 28. As Chair Harder said, this hasn't been a problem for 19 years, but we are aware it's going to be a problem this summer, and that's why we've asked for this motion to be enacted by council.
Awesome, thank you, Chair.
Okay, anything else on the motion? Carried, add up day. The next motion that requires a suspension of the rules is by Councillor Harder, seconded by Councillor Tierney, 3640 Green Bank Road, minor variances, council a resolution regarding section 34 of the Planning Act, because planning is not going to be able to meet until August 22. So on suspension? Carried. Councillor Harder, would you like to introduce your motion, seconded by Councillor Tierney?
It's another one of those weird things that happens, that the council approved the zoning for this subdivision on September 12, 2018, and the lot area for the back-to-back towns was approved at 150 square meters. Taggart made an error in that the lot area should have been requested to be set at 94 square meters, and we have grants, grant permits with the lot area of 94 square meters have already been approved, if Taggart applies for the building permits on blocks 66 and 70.
Any questions or comments on Councillor Harder's motion, seconded by Councillor Tierney? On the motion, carried. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the Rules of Procedure? Notice of motion for consideration of subsequent meaning of this motion, Councillor Suds, please, seconded by Councillor Harder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion, in essence, it is enabling the Canadonorth Business Association to move forward with installing unique stylized street signs or blades within the Canadonorth Technology Park, being Canada's largest technology park with over 500 companies and 24,000 employees. I'll read just the, therefore be it resolved, council approve an exemption of the city's tourism and public service signs policy to permit the installation of unique stylized street sign blades on any street within the Canadonorth Tech Park, and further be it resolved that the installation and maintenance of these signs and any additional signs erected in the area will be paid for by the Canadonorth Business Association, and be it further resolved that Director of Traffic Services be delegated the authority to approve the final design and locations for the sign with the concurrence of the ward councillor and in consultation with the business association.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at the next meeting of council. Councillor Deans has a notice of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, whereas it's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Fleury, whereas an IPD entitled revised agreement between the City of Ottawa and the Ottawa Champions Baseball Club, 300 Coventry Road, was listed on the Finance and Economic Development Committee agenda on July 10, 2019, and whereas in 2013, the city initiated a competitive process for the lease of the Ottawa Stadium for long-term baseball use as directed by council, and whereas there is reason to believe that the revised lease agreement does not meet the terms and conditions that council approved in 2013, and whereas council only delegated the authority to staff to execute the lease agreement based on the terms and conditions outlined in the 2013 report, therefore be it resolved that the IPD entitled revised agreement between the City of Ottawa Champions Baseball Club, 300 Coventry Road, be added to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other notices of motion for consideration of subsequent meetings? No. Motion to introduce bylaws, Councillor Menard, please, seconded by Councillor DeRus.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings, be read and passed.
On the motion, carried.
Carried.
Confirmation bylaw, Conseil Menard, appuyé par Conseil DeRus.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of city council meeting of July 10, 2019.
The motion, carried.
Carried.
We have one written inquiry, Councillor Fleury, please.
Can staff provide the following information? One, the number of 311 complaints related to rats per year over the last five years. Two, how has the increase in complaints inform the approach from the city's internal working group on the issue? Three, what operational improvements are underway to better equip city staff to provide residence, provide support for residents for traveling surface rats? And four, what measures and resources planned to be implemented to reduce the population of sewer rats that are now living at the surface and negatively impacting residents and businesses citywide?
Councillor Deans has a written inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, in 2013, the city initiated a competitive process to lease the Ottawa Stadium for long-term baseball use as directed by council. As a result of this process, staff recommended the Canadian American Association of Professional Baseball, the Ottawa Champions Baseball Club, as the preferred proponent. At the time, council delegated authority to staff to execute the lease agreement based on the terms and conditions outlined in the report and approved by council. At the July 10 Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, an IPD entitled revised agreement between the City of Ottawa and the Ottawa Champions Baseball Club, 300 Coventry Road, was listed on the agenda. The revised lease agreement is substantially different from the original agreement approved by council, and concerns have been raised regarding the delegated authority staff had to negotiate this new agreement. As a result, I am asking if staff could, one, identify the specific delegated authority staff relied on to negotiate the lease for the stadium where the terms and conditions are different from the terms and conditions approved by council, including the assignment of naming rights, and two, identify the specific dates, staff, and timelines associated with the request for a change in the terms and the various steps taken to establish the new agreement slash lease. Could staff please provide this information in advance of the August 28, 2019 council meeting?
Thank you. Adjournment, Councillor Menard, please. Seconded by Councillor DeRus.
That the proceedings of city council meeting of July 10, 2019 be adjourned.
Carried, carried, thank you, meeting adjourned.